My fellows, meeting in order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, February 13, 2017, and the time is 7:00 P.M. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, in the table file this evening, you'll see that we have a few additional personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, and change in assignment. We have a leave of absence request and resignation. There's also a grant request. And then in addition, there is a narrative for this evening's flexible learning day schedule that will be presented by Principal Lear.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have a possible opportunity for public comments. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, January 23, 2017. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Move by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any discussion or comments of the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, January 23, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to announcements in recognition. Dr. Hillman.
We have several this evening. First of all, we'd like to congratulate Tracy Clausen, who is the district's grounds coordinator. Tracy was recently elected president of the Minnesota Park and Sports Turf Managers Association. This is really quite an honor for Tracy, and we all know he works tirelessly to keep our grounds looking great and to keep them free of snow and ice to the best of his ability during the winter months. We'd also like to congratulate Bridgewater Elementary Principal Nancy Antoin. She has been named one of three finalists for the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association 2017 National Distinguished Principal Award. This is a great honor as well, and it was announced at the MESSO Winter Institute Conference on February 3. And I believe the official announcement for the Minnesota National Distinguished Principal entrant will be in April, if I remember, mid-May. Okay, so this spring. So congratulations to Principal Antoin. We're very proud of her. Governor Dayton has declared Wednesday, February 22, Minnesota's first Minnesota School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Throughout the state of Minnesota, school districts and school bus contractors will be honoring school bus drivers. We'll be doing the same thing here on our school district. Staff in each of our buildings will be recognizing their schools' bus drivers. And Benjamin Bus also has several activities planned that day to celebrate our dedicated drivers. And I think we've been ahead of the curve on this. As you know, that Bridgewater has hosted a bus driver appreciation breakfast that is very well received for several years. So we're thankful someone else has noticed here, and Governor Dayton is taking it on. As all of you know, Northfield Public Schools has adopted as a near-term priority as part of our strategic plan, the action step of building and fostering relationships with a commitment to social, emotional health for all. And member of the district's Student Services Support Team have done extensive research on social, emotional curricula, and has narrowed the choices to three highly regarded and effective curricula. The next step in the process is gathering feedback from stakeholders, our teachers and our families. And there will be an open house at the High School Media Center on Thursday, February 23, from 3:30 to 6:00 P.M. And at 5:30 at the Community School for families to view the materials, ask questions of the team members, and provide written feedback on the three curricula. We invite board members to come at any time between 3:30 and 6:00. And anyone who at home would like to come as well, that feedback is really important to us. And that is just, that's the community meeting. There are a few other meetings that are scheduled within buildings for staff feedback as well. So this is just another opportunity for them to come and provide us feedback. And finally, this evening, the Raider Speech Team started their season with a second-place large school finish at the Rochester John Marshall Invitational this past weekend. Top finishers for the Raiders were Logan Ledman, first in the informative category; Libby Barth, finished second in informative; Jackson Hillman, finished second in humorous; Grace Hillman, finished fourth in drama; Leah Pack, finished fourth in extemporaneous reading; Elena Falk and Joni Erickson, finished fifth in duo; Alex Gunn, fifth place in extemporaneous reading; Natalie Swanson, fifth place in humorous; Aaron Gunn, fifth place in storytelling; Anna Millerhagen, sixth place in storytelling; Tia Pittsavas, fifth in informative; Aziri Marcial, sixth in informative; Colin Hauck, sixth in original oratory; and Courtney Nelson, sixth in the great speeches category. Honorable mentions were awarded to Grace Muth, extemporaneous reading; Elizabeth Peterson, extemporaneous reading; Celia Mayr, humorous; Andrew Schmelzer, poetry; and Emily Walzer, prose. And as Coach Sexton West likes to call them, the speechies had a very good weekend. So congratulations to the Raider Speech Team. And those are your announcements for this evening.
Thanks. Okay, board members, anything you'd like to add? Helen.
I just wanted to recognize the one-act play. They had a singular performance on Sunday, and they had two one-acts that they developed, all student-led, student-directed, student-produced, student-acted. And they have a sell-out performance, I think, to the students tomorrow. But it was a terrific performance, and I just know there's so many drama opportunities, but I wanted to recognize those students.
Okay. All right, we will move on to our first event for discussion, which we had with us this evening, Principal of the High School, Joel Lear, to talk about his, the plan for a flexible learning day coming up at the high school.
Thank you for having me and allowing me this opportunity. We have, really, the foundation of the idea of the flexible learning day on February 28th is really about multiple efforts over the years to accomplish testing of one sort or another at the high school and facilitating kind of the expectations of the test originator. So in this particular case, the ACT for juniors. And so we have talked in the past few years about, is there a way? I like this.
Joel, can I take this opportunity?
Sure.
Just interrupt for one second. I was remiss and not reminded board members that there's a copy of Joel's presentation in the table file, so. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thanks, no problem. That's quite all right. So as we began to look at the ACT, which again is a recent innovation in the state of Minnesota, that all students can access the ACT during the school day. So February 28th was the day we had selected. It happened to be that February 28th was right around the same time that our senior social studies teachers had planned to kick off the senior capstone with what's called the idea generator day. And so those two events take a number of students, obviously both seniors and juniors, offline from the regular scheduled school day. And they also take a significant number of staff to execute the processes of those. The senior idea generator day is about a half a day, just a little under a half a day. And obviously, the ACT, from the mental standpoint, is a full day, but it takes about four and a half of the periods of the school day. So we began talking about looking at ways to modify that school day. And what we came up with was an opportunity for ninth and 10th graders to do some flexible learning, specifically that they would move the curriculum forward. They would have activities and different learning opportunities available to them provided by their teachers, both in advance and on that day, but would not be required to be here at school that day. What that allows us to do is move the curriculum forward with the ninth and 10th graders, but at the same time, it frees up a number of staff and a number of critical spaces for us so that we can function with the ACT and the idea generator day happen simultaneously that morning. Typically, when we have done the ACT in the past, we've locked down, basically, if you're familiar with the building, in the M Wing and down into the toward the art area, that whole part of the building is cordoned off, and we need facilitators for the test as well as supervisors for the hallway and hallway monitors so that students aren't moving down those paths inadvertently. And something similar happens then for idea generator day. It's not quite as high stakes in the H Wing where we set that up, but it creates some of the similar structural issues. So ninth and 10th graders will not be required to report that day. Juniors, obviously, will take the ACT, and then seniors will have idea generator day. So ninth, 10th, and 12th graders will have components of flexible learning, where they may be at home, but via their iPads or also through hard copies of lessons and learning that they take with them the day prior or the days prior. They'll be able to move their curriculum and learning forward so that then when they come back on Wednesday, it'll be as if the day really did happen as it typically would here. Obviously, you can't recreate the classroom environment verbatim, but we've asked teachers to be creative in terms of their approach to this day in the hopes that it can be a bit of an exploration as to how we might function in environments that allow us to kind of break the structure of the square classroom in the building as we know it. So there's nothing revolutionary in terms of flexible learning happening here at the high school yet, but it certainly is a conversation that we've begun to have around the idea of snow days and days like this, when we can use the flexibility of the building in a way that we typically haven't with the normal school day. So again, the 28th for the ninth and 10th graders will try to replicate learning and lessons like we would a regular school day. Seniors will have that dialed back a little bit because they're here for half the day. And then our take on the ACT is that cognitively, that's probably enough for our juniors, so the juniors won't have an additional layer of learning attached to their ACT experience. We will have the building open. Lunch will be available, so there will be supervised places for students to study if they want to come here and access the Internet, or if they just want to be here, or perhaps parents may have a little alternative on a day when parents might be working, that there will certainly be safe supervised places here available at school. But other than those students, students aren't required to be here that day. A couple of other benefits at the bottom of the sheet that I distributed through the table file, I call it unintended benefits or unintended positive consequences, depending on how you look at it. We are actually, one of the things that happens throughout the course of the year, we do curriculum cycles with our different departments, as well as other partial department meetings, full department meetings that pull teachers out of the classroom en masse on school days. So we have scheduled an English Language Arts meeting that's going to be looking at kind of the future of how we deliver our language arts programming. And we'll also have, that'll be a half-day meeting, a full-day meeting of the math department looking at curriculum, the normal curriculum review cycle. And then Special Ed is also going to use some time that afternoon to do since department-specific training. So it also allows us in those three glimpses to kind of avoid that instructional loss at other times of the school year where teachers are actually pulled out of classrooms and substitutes are called in to deliver the content for those days. So a number of things that were kind of taken care of on that one day. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you would have. Yeah, please.
Thank you. I think this sounds like an exciting idea. I wondered if you've considered, I know it falls on a Tuesday, but having a later start that day to get any cognitive gains that getting that extra hour of sleep might have for the kids who are taking the ACT.
Right. And you know, part of that, it's a great idea. I think we would have to kind of investigate the opportunities that parents would have for getting their students here an hour later. The way we have it set up right now, juniors will start the test, you know, shortly after the typical start of the school day would be on a normal day. And that allows students to access the transportation that we have available through the district. So it's certainly something that we could, you know, pursue in terms of down the road. The slight trick is that ACT determines the dates of the test. So if we didn't say, for example, if we had the flexibility to place it on a Wednesday, obviously, there would be a built-in opportunity there. But not having that, I think it would be kind of a study to say, well, just how difficult would it be to assume the transportation that would get everybody here? We managed to make it work on the first day of school when 10th through 12th graders arrive at 12:30. They somehow find a way to get to school later on that day, but that would be certainly an option to investigate.
Other questions? Board members? No.
Can we go to follow-up reports eventually?
Absolutely.
Be great to see how everything worked out.
Yeah.
What you've learned from the experience. Sounds like wonderful opportunity.
It is. And you know, like I said, we're really trying to encourage staff to be, to kind of think outside the box, because I think that there's, you know, there's a natural, danger is probably overstating it, Noel, but tendency to say, well, instead of delivering my content live and in person, I'm going to record myself for 25, 30 minutes and then have an assignment and a handout and whatever. And if you replicate that six or seven times, suddenly, you've really involved the student in a, I don't think that's exactly what we're thinking of when we think of cutting-edge flexible learning. So we're really encouraging the staff to think outside the box about some creativity. And we're also keeping in mind, too, that when students go home, they have very, very different contexts in which they're functioning on a daily basis. So we're being cognizant of what access or what lack of access students will have so that all students can feel that it's equitable in the way we deliver that content that day. Thank you.
Helen.
I'm just curious from a ninth or 10th grade parent perspective of how, what the expectations would be if my students should be doing this sort of work, will it take about four hours if they're playing World of Warcraft for four hours? It's probably not, you know, not getting done.
I can promise you, no one's assigning that. And that's a great question, and that's really something that we're developing over the next days and weeks leading up to that date. We have talked about how really it's not about essentially replicating the school day as much as it is about using those, that flexibility to say, how do we advance the learning in a way that would be kind of typical of a day's instruction. But again, we don't want to just simply, you know, take a lecture from live and turn it into a video. So we're going to be talking about that as a staff and as departments over the course of the coming days and really try to be able to articulate that clearly for parents. So that when you get a message that says, we have nothing to do today, that's probably not accurate. And if they're saying, we've got 15 hours of homework, that's not accurate either, but we're certainly going to find some ground in between that allows students to feel like they're productive, but it's also not debilitating them in any way.
Okay, other questions, comments?
Can I just ask a couple things here? So I think just a couple of pieces is that, Joel, we are planning to do some follow-up surveying of students, families, and teachers, right?
That's correct.
So I think that that's part of the follow-up report for Noel, because as you've heard us talk about moving toward more personalization in learning over the past several years, you've heard us talk about the intent of trying to take the, where time is the constant and learning the variable, where learning is the constant and time is the variable. And, you know, there's, you need to be very intentional as we move down that path. And what I like about this particular date is the fact that staff know well in advance, you know, in terms of this piece, it's a piece that came through the building's department chairs, looking at a way to creatively solve some issues that you have when you have part of the building locked down for the day and some staff unavailable due to the pieces with the ACT. And I think it gives us a dry run, you know, in learning, how can we apply the flexible learning day concepts? We've had a committee that had looked at some flexible learning pieces. This day is a way to answer some of those questions as we move forward. And what are the other kinds of opportunities, you know, that might be available for us down the line? Last year, we had at least one team went to the state tournament, and we know that in those days, we have a number of high school students who are out. So hopefully, we continue to have that kind of experience where our students are getting an opportunity to go to state tournaments. Is this a possibility for that? Of course, we know there are several school districts that are using this strategy when they have inclement weather days. We're not quite there yet, but again, this is an opportunity to practice, a planned practice, where we get to learn and determine what are the things that are successful for us here in Northfield, because we're not like St. Peter or Farmington or Zembrun or LaZepa who are already doing those things on snow closure days. But how could we apply it here? Should that be a way that we choose to move ahead in the future? And I think it's going to really provide some opportunities for our students to experience, especially our ninth and 10th grade students who are obviously mostly off-campus that or off-campus that day, to get to experience that opportunity, to have that expectation without having the class to go to. We know that every college student is going to be expected of that, of them when they reach college. So trying to be intentional in planning some of those opportunities for our kids so that when they leave us, they know, yeah, I've done this before in a certain way, and it may not be exactly like what I'm going to do in college, or provide some other opportunities. So I appreciate the high school, you know, bringing this forward and looking through that. Joel, could you also just briefly talk about, I think another flexible learning opportunity that has happened, that we've been experimenting with, has been the, for lack of a better term, we don't have a creative name for it yet, but the substitute-free classroom at the high school. Could you just describe it? That's been very limited, it's been very intentional. Could you just describe that? Because it's in the same vein as the flexible learning day that we're talking about in just a slightly different way.
One of the names we chose not to use was unsupervised learning.
Yes, that's a good choice, Joel.
The sub-free classroom, we just kind of piloted in a couple of very small, specific places where, and really, it was a conversation we began having in the district when it became clear that substitutes might be in short supply. And a couple of schools nearby here had experimented with the notion of rather than automatically hiring a substitute for a group of students throughout the course of a day, where the activities might be very independent, so the substitute's not leading activities per se, but delivering the directions for the day, and then the students are working independently. But that setting can be, in some cases, more efficient and more flexible, and/or more flexible in terms of how we approach, how do we have the students getting the work done, but also how do we best, and serve their needs, but also respond to things like a substitute shortage and respond to the notion that perhaps having an individual in every classroom where there's a substitute needed to essentially supervise students in basically a study hall setting. So we've been exploring the notion of having common areas, so lower cafeteria, upper cafeteria, as places where students can gather if their teacher is gone and then do what we call passive supervision, which I know sounds a little bit like we're not watching them. It's just a fumble term, but the reality is, if you think about the number of times during our school day, and when I say school day, I mean when the building opens until, you know, well after 5:00, we have students moving through the building in unsupervised or passively supervised ways. Once teachers are, their contract time ends and teachers go home en masse, we have some coaches, but a number of athletes in the building. We have a custodial team that is here. All of those adults left in the building in some way or another, formal or informally, are doing some supervision of the students that are still here. And so kind of in a similar vein, in the morning before school, we have students having breakfast in the cafeteria, walking the halls in the lower cafeteria, moving around the building, and again, in a way that they are supervised, but it's not in the same traditional setting we think of a classroom of 25, 30 students with an adult in the room. So with those kind of as the backdrop, we've had some groups where a teacher's going to be gone, they don't hire us, so the students in advance have all of the materials, in a couple of cases, on their iPads. In some cases, it was small group activities it needed to do, and they gathered in the lower cafeteria. So among guidance counselors, administrators, in some cases, food service folks who happen to be in the lower cafeteria food area prepping for the lunch shift, those students are supervised virtually the entire time. And yet, we were able to go without that official substitute for those groups of students. Obviously, depending on what content is being delivered at any given time, it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all. It's also not intended to be something that takes place behind closed doors, so we're not going to have a subless classroom, but then leave them in the classroom, because the open spaces are, as I say, much easier to supervise in those in more kind of a passive approach than classrooms. We also have a structural issue, structural weakness with that whole philosophy in terms of the limited number of open spaces we have that can house a number of students. So we have the two cafeterias, but obviously, leading up to lunch, during lunch, and then after with the cleanup, those spaces are limited. The auditorium is a larger space, but it's a, is an enclosed space. So we could start looking at not just necessarily sub-free, but looking at consolidating. So maybe there are two science teachers who are gone, and we hire one substitute to cover for both of them in a larger setting. So a lot of different kind of iterations of how that could look. And we're just exploring that right now and communicating with some of the other schools around the region that are trying it, and some with some pretty good success.
Okay, is there other question or something, Rob?
I have a question, because you, and maybe you actually, Matt can answer this better than Joel. If you're developing this at the high school, and you talked about if high school students are at tournaments and you might develop it there, it sounds like all this effort is going into the high school. Do you end up with a situation where you have high school teachers having less student contact days than elementary school teachers, and you end up with sort of imbalance that might become problematic?
I think what we're talking about here, Rob, is a case where even though in these flexible learning times, a teacher may not be seeing their students on that particular given day, they are still responsible for generating the content, they're still responsible for, you know, developing the flexible learning activity. There's going to be some kind of assessment, you know, that happens with that. And in many cases, in the other districts that we've seen do this, you know, there's also an ongoing expectation of ability to connect with staff during the day. So I think that while it will look different, the fact of the responsibility of the preparation, the answering students' questions, and the follow-up is very similar to what it would be in a regular school day, it just looks very different. So that will be one of the pieces that we'll be watching as we experiment with this. We would not, now, there are some districts from the perspective of looking at, for example, the snow closures, where they are using a flexible learning approach at all grade levels. And how it looks at the pre-K2 level is more of a activity-based piece that is usually sent home at the beginning of the year, regular intervals, to say, if we were to have a flexible learning day because of weather in the next several weeks or the next quarter, here's the activity that we'd like you to do that particular day. We're not ready to go there yet or to talk about that yet. We're simply looking at it at the high school. And even at the middle school and below, we're not ready for the substitute-free classroom. That's not even on the discussion point at this point, but looking at how we can maybe creatively address some of these things. The only way to know those things in terms of the questions and the concerns that come up is to try it. And I think we've got a good solution on the 28th. But the key thing is going to be that the staff will still be responsible for preparing the materials, assessing anything that is needed, following up the next day, and those kinds of things. So I don't envision this right now as something that is an every day or even five times a year. It is designed to have a response, to continue to have the curriculum moving forward in such a way that we continue to meet the standards, we continue to teach those standards, to have students have learning opportunities for those standards, and assessing and making sure that we get through as much of the curriculum as we need to in the limited days that we have. So if it was something where I was saying we were thinking about 20 days like this year, which, then I would say we'd have, but I think what we're talking about is very intentional pieces to learn about it. And then, if it's something that we determine, you know, over the course of the next several years, that there are additional things that we want to explore, we can certainly discuss how that impacts the day-to-day work at that time. But at this point, it's really targeted, it's very intentional, and the truth is that it would be different on those days anyway, because even if you think about February 28th, even if we had all the students come, there would be some shifting in some of the rooms, because the ACT says you've got to lock down. In fact, there are several schools that canceled the whole building on the ACT day because they don't have enough or the ability to put students in a specific area. So that day would be different for kids anyway. This just provides us an opportunity for them to learn about how to flexibly learn and for us to learn how we're teaching in that way.
Board members, any other questions or comments?
I have, most of all, my questions are answered, so I really appreciate it. And most of all, I want to say I just really appreciate this approach. I think this is really excellent, that we're moving in this direction. And I think, you know, we're, you know, you're at a stage of trying and then seeing what works and evaluating. And so I think, you know, it's a first step towards really learning a great deal and moving forward, so I appreciate that. The only, let's see, two questions I had. One was, as a parent of a high school student, I had the email probably two weeks ago or so now that notified parents that this was happening, and I just wondered if you had any specific follow-up from parents or any reaction following your email.
No. Believe it or not, absolute silence in that regard. And I think, you know, I think part of that is that when it was, that we got that information out early, you know, so in parents' mind, I think it's, you know, if we're sneaking up on them with that, sneaking up on them with it, I think that can be problematic. But to this point, we haven't heard really any response in terms of issues with that day.
And then I think you were, you talked about being aware that some students might have less access to Wi-Fi, so I'm assuming, I think you've talked in the past where they would have the ability to download whatever information they would need, et cetera.
Exactly.
And then will the staff, will the particular teaching staff be available via, you know, email or School G message type thing throughout the day if a student had a question?
You bet. The exception to that would be, like I talked about, the math department will be working in their curriculum writing, so, and there will be opportunities during that time where they can look and respond. And then also, by ACT law, the proctors for the exam can't be accessing Internet, or excuse me, can't be accessing email and those types of things. We are looking at a double supervisor situation where each classroom would have two proctors, where they would switch on and off or switch halfway through. So that would hopefully mitigate some of those issues if they, if there were teachers that students needed to contact. some of those issues if they, if there were teachers that students needed to contact. But yes, otherwise, teachers will be readily available.
Excellent. Well, thank you. And I agree with you, no, it'd be great to have a follow-up report on what we learned and how we look forward.
Certainly, we'd be happy to do that.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on to our second item for discussion, which is a follow-up on our February 8th board work session.
So just, you know, last Wednesday, we met in this room with a work session that focused on the master facilities plan and just, because not everybody in the room here was here for that, I just thought I'd review what was discussed very briefly and then open the discussion for, really to extend the discussions that we had last week and additional questions that board members had, thoughts that they had. And so just the key thing is what we talked about last Wednesday was, we reviewed the master facilities plan executive summary that was presented and adopted in November. We then also took a look at the components of that plan, so Director of Buildings and Rooms, Jim Colseth, reviewed the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan and specifically targeted the projects associated with Northfield High School, obviously due to the fact that Northfield High School is one of the next projects, and there's an estimated approximately $6 million in deferred maintenance that could be going into that, into this site, and that's relevant to the discussion about the master facilities plan. So, sorry, I'm trying to back up as good as I can here to not blow out the speaker, but Bruce is ably figuring it out over there. We also talked about the next projects and just reminded people about what the next projects are. An elementary project focusing on the potential of a new Greenville Park on the same site as the current building, a renovated Greenville Park for the purposes of early childhood center, some other minor modifications at Bridgewater and at Sibley. We reviewed the high school project, which is exactly what it sounds like. Then we also reviewed the role of the facilities advisory committee, and that led into our discussion about our most recent thought exchange during the conversation piece in which the top two categories of questions from the community and from our staff were around our master facilities plan, and so asking the board to discuss where we're at at this point in terms of the master facilities plan and the next projects. We also discussed how that aligns to our current strategic plan. Then we discussed things around the operating levy that we have that expires in 2022. Val Marisdorf, Director of Finance, presented to you about our current operating levy and what some other potential options could be moving forward. I'm going to give you a legislative update here later this evening on what we know as the state has continued, even though we've made some gains in the last couple of years, we still have a long history of chronic underfunding. And I, we use the analogy of that we don't want to skate to where the puck is, but we want to skate to where the puck will be to ensure that we have strong funding for our excellent program and the staff for the foreseeable future, especially as we talk about master facilities. Then we also talked about levy and bonds and the different options and different ways that we can look at those things in terms of, do we want to address one of the next projects, do we want to address both of them? How do we include an operating levy as part of that discussion? And we also discussed some timing, so just to reactivate for the folks at home that they know the agenda of what we discussed at our work session last week. And at this point, what I want to do is, we had some really robust discussion last Wednesday after those presentations and wanted to just open it up for people with questions that they might still have, other thoughts that they had, because as we move forward, as we said, we'd like to have some kind of decision in terms of if we're planning to go ahead with an operating levy and/or a bond election next fall. We really settled that having some knowledge by June would be ideal. We prefer maybe, but we are not convinced the legislature can get their work done, and there might be some important information that the legislature can provide for. So this is one of several discussion opportunities I plan for you to have over the next several months, and just curious what questions or thoughts people might have.
Amy. So I've been thinking back, it was an excellent conversation, and I'm wondering, though, as the new person on the board, if you could go through again the advantages and disadvantages to renovating the high school as opposed to building a home in the high school?
So this will just be a brief history lesson, and the key thing is that if we go back to the beginning of the master facilities planning process in June of 2014, that fall we held 18 community meetings, and then after that, ATS and R, the architectural partner that helped us with the initial planning, developed two different approaches. One was what we called the interdependent approach, which included a new building for the high school, and another one that was called the independent approach, which looked at each building individually and said, okay, what are the deferred maintenance projects that would need to be done in order to get the building to, you know, like some kind of modern standard? And the estimate at that time was, the renovations at the high school would be nearly, if I remember it correctly, between $12 and $15 million in terms of depending on how you wanted to do it, and that did not touch one instructional space. You know, that was simply for the kinds of deferred maintenance and other minor modifications that were needed to give the building the space and some of the upgrades that it needed in terms of to try to just extend the life of the building, not even talk about potential renovation. So what we did then is, after we developed those two approaches, we had an additional seven community meetings. And during those community meetings, in addition with the online thought exchange, the consensus that we developed as part of the master facilities plan was that most people who came to the meetings or contributed to through thought exchange believe that the high school is in the twilight of its years. It's more than 50 years old. We all wish we could go back to the time when they decided the particular day out of this facility and the California model that was selected, but we can't, we can't time travel back. And so the folks that came forward, what we presented to the board last November was a determination based on, you know, you put $12 million into a building that is 50-some years old, that most people agree is in the twilight of its usable years. And you then think, how much longer if we put those dollars into the building will we have to go before we'd be able to come back to the community for a new building? And we had estimated approximately 25 years, that whatever we did to this building would have to help extend its life for 25 years. So as the board discussed and debated which direction to go, either renovating or, you know, including a next project of something new, the determination was that we felt that putting a new building on the plan was a more effective investment of dollars in the long term than trying to fix a building that we know is in the twilight of its career. So I don't know if that's helpful, Amy, but really, it was looking at the cost-benefit analysis and looking at what would another, with about $12 million into this facility, what would the next 25 years look like? And again, not even looking at any instructional spaces within those projected dollars.
So the thought of keeping this, so I'm thinking in terms of my house. My house is almost 100 years old. It doesn't get the same use of 1,200 students here all the time, but if you have, you know, is there a way that the current building could be renovated and any additional spaces needed put on it so it would last another 50 years? Or do you really think that's not how schools work?
No, and it is always a, you know, we, there are times when we use a comparison of a school or a district, you know, to your home, either in your home budget or how you take care of your house and those things. And unfortunately, you know, in this particular case, the, what I think is that, my personal opinion is the difference in the mass of size of the two facilities and the multiple use that you're looking at, what a school building gets versus what a home gets. And I think the key thing in terms of looking at this particular building is the determination of if we were to, in fact, we had several people who said the last thing that you want to do is add on to the building again, because that's frankly, part of the problem that we have with the facility here. There are a number of different elevations as you, just right when you walk in by the district office, you notice how you kind of go down a landing, and that part of the building, actually, a lot of it sits below ground level. If you go near, if you're in our office, as you know, that part of that building is below the ground. There are just a number of pieces when you add on and add on and add on to a facility, it can create additional issues in terms of where the roof joins, pieces like that. And in addition, thinking about how we can reimagine the learning spaces in a modern building. I think if we choose to go ahead and talk about it in high school, one of the things that's going to be on the district is going to be to say, how do we convey to the public what education will look like differently for our students than the current building that we're in? Because the current building that we enter, the average person coming through, looks very serviceable, and I think that that's the right word, serviceable. So the question is going to be, what are the kinds of modern and flexible spaces that are part of our strategic plan that we would be able to get out of a new building as opposed to try to renovating a current facility that really has been an addition upon an addition upon an addition with a renovation here and a renovation there? And so I think the determination is that it is not as much like our house as we think when we think about all the multiple uses, though we use that analogy in a number of other cases. It just doesn't seem to fit in this one.
Thank you. Board members, other questions or comments about the work session issue?
Well, somebody that went to school here, I mean, you understand, you have that addition, I mean, that addition, the main part was built in '65, and then you have over there is '93, and I'm not sure, and this other, so I mean, there is, I mean, you have maximized pretty much the building and the space for what it could be, and other than just overextending that, it gets to the point of how much money you want to put into something that just doesn't have the right design from the get-go, you know? And now, modern buildings are better and set for two-story high schools, so it's not going to be worse.
Other questions, comments? No? Okay, so I had a few. Joel, did you have some?
I did, but not this time.
Oh, right. Well, I just didn't want to speak before other board members had the opportunity. So I was thinking about, you know, we were talking about, I know you had asked us to think about, you know, some more further information. I mean, I really appreciated the level of detail we were able to get at in just one initial work session, and I know we'll have to roll up our sleeves again here and really take a look at some things. So I do have some additional things that I think could be helpful as we move forward. And I don't know if you want me to...
Sure.
One thing that I know has been extremely important to the district is the long-term facilities maintenance revenue, and I know that that, you talked about it at the work session, how that's generated off the age of your buildings. So my question was twofold there. Would there be a way to examine the scope of projects around renovating the Greenville Park piece for early childhood and then the Bridgewater and Sibley pieces? Could any aspects of those projects be done as part of long-term facilities maintenance revenue? I guess just to look to see, is there a way to reduce that total bond and be able to get creative with the long-term facilities maintenance revenue? And then if the calculations are done on the long-term facilities maintenance revenue post having the two new buildings, what does that revenue look like? And do we anticipate that that revenue will cover the deferred maintenance projects going forward in our other buildings? So are we losing enough aspect of a revenue that we would be able to cover? Or will, you know, cover future renovations in, or deferred maintenance, I'm sorry, in the other buildings? And I was wondering if there, let's see, is there a way that we could generate some sort of a spreadsheet that would show, you know, we talked about how the levy and the bond discussion has to be so done as a total package for the taxpayer in order to say, you know, here's what we see and how we have to approach the needs of the district in terms of learning and the educational adequacy of our buildings, you know, going forward? So is there a way that we could develop a spreadsheet so that as a board, we could look at the sort of total impact to a taxpayer in terms of if we were, you know, and, you know, the number of scenarios that we've put together, but I think just in order for the board to be able to see what we would be asking for the community. So that would have to include obviously three different levels of a levy and then potentially three different, or two, three different bond type approaches. So is there a way to put that together in a spreadsheet that says, you know, determining which projects you would move to going forward here would be the potential impact to the taxpayer in totality between levy and bond? So, and then the other piece that I think Val did a really great job of explaining, but I felt like I got a little bit lost to as well, is there's different scenarios we can approach in terms of the levy and the dollars that we need. And I know forecasting too far out gets really difficult to do, but I'm just wondering if we have a way to see what a, just a renewal of the existing levy could look like, what? That $424, I believe it is, would look like, and then if we were to go to the full? So is there a way to project that far down to give us a realistic, in order for us to say, we feel like we could, you know, be comfortable going here or we really need to go here, here? And again, that's also different tax impacts for the taxpayers. So I guess sort of now looking at really the financial implications of our decisions in terms of the taxpayers and what that would mean for the district as well going forward.
I think Val and I will tag team this one, but I think let's go back to the Greenville Park question in terms of your question about Greenville in terms of as the early childhood facility and/or the Sibley and Bridgewater parts of the project, which of course are much smaller in terms of the total bond. So I think there's a couple of things, is that the short answer is yes, I think that we certainly can use long-term facilities maintenance for the renovation portions. The key thing we'll have to check on is that if you think about the Bridgewater and the Sibley pieces, at Bridgewater, the master facilities plan says you would construct a new front entrance. Long-term facilities maintenance revenue can be used to maintain and keep the building in good order, it can't be used to add on. And so the problem that we would have with the long-term facilities maintenance portion is that for those parts of the projects, it would not be able, I don't believe would be eligible for use. Question about Greenville Park is, I think, a little bit more nuanced in the fact that how we've heard it is that the facility or the room or the parking lot or whatever, when you use long-term facilities maintenance revenue, means to serve the same purpose afterwards that it did before. When we talk about an early childhood center, the fact is that those classrooms would still be classrooms for the most part. The thing that we would have to just verify is if that were to be the case, would we be going from an elementary program, you know, to a preschool program? There's going to be some differences that are needed there. That's a more nuanced of a question, and we'll have to get some advice from the department. Now, that being said, what you're asking about could also be accomplished with some other kinds of financial financing. So we think about how we did the Sibley addition, where you know that we constructed the Sibley addition without voter approval because we committed our operating capital for X number of years to pay that particular piece off, and we're getting pretty close. I think that finishes up in a couple of years, if I'm right.
Four years.
Okay, four more years on that. So you could use that strategy in terms of committing some of our operating capital long-term, and that is the, remind me the name of that particular, that's a capital...
It's a lease.
It's the, okay, the way that we do it is through a kind of a lease appropriation piece, and then again, we're committing our capital dollars to pay that piece over time. So you could do that. The issue that when we choose to do that, that will hamstring the budget for a number of years while we pay that particular piece off. And when we think about the Bridgewater and the Sibley parts of the elementary project compared to the whole, those are pretty small, and if we were to keep those as part of a bond question, like the elementary project suggests that it is, it would provide us greater flexibility to continue to maintain the other buildings, you know, and other parts of those buildings as we move forward. So the long-term facilities maintenance, there's a possibility that some of the Greenville Park piece could be done that way, but we would need to have some nuances. One of the things that sticks out in my mind from when we were trained about it is that if it was a science lab before, it needs to be a science lab after. Well, the question would be if it was a kindergarten room before and it's a preschool room after, is that close enough, you know, for MBE to approve that? So any thoughts on that, Val, or does that make sense?
I feel pretty confident that most of the Greenville stuff would qualify, but we would obviously doubt our eyes and the cluster to just double check and make sure that that could be the case. As far as the calculation on the long-term facilities, we actually are in a better position by, since we'll be maintaining Greenville, so that doesn't drop our average building age as much, because we'll remain that one. And because of the additions on the high school, the average building age for the MBE calculation is actually lower than if it's, I think it's like 28. So that doesn't, it's not as significant as an impact as if it were like a... So that doesn't, it's not as significant as an impact as if it were like a 50-year-old building and it would be dropping off. So that, there are some pros to, there are some positive sides for that for the calculation. I haven't run the specific numbers to see what the calculation would change to, but the long-term facility calculation, you basically get a prorated amount based on your average building age under 35 years. And I think my rough calc showed us ending at 28 years with the average if we added the two new buildings. So I don't think it would be, it'd certainly be a drop in our revenue, but I think we're seeing that it can drop, so, but I can certainly run the details on that.
And remember too, if you were to, let's just say for hypothetical purposes, that we have two new buildings in the district, the fact is that that significantly reduces, obviously, the deferred maintenance that those need for several, you know, a decade or more before you really have to start looking at that. And the long-term facilities maintenance revenue program, by not dropping a significant amount on the average age of the building, we maintain most of that funding. And remember that LTFM can be, you can actually create a fund balance, so that what you're able to do then is, for example, we're using LTFM funding right now to do the new Bridgewater, but we're committing long-term facilities maintenance revenue for 10 years. There is, there's a strategy where you would actually could save that money up ahead of time, and then when you're looking at paying cash for some of those projects, there's an advantage to that as well. So I do think that in that particular scenario, you would probably have the greatest amount of flexibility to maintain the other buildings because of these things coming at fruition around the same time. Then if you can remind me the other couple of points that you had here.
Well, I don't have a taxpayer or forecast. So the forecast is something that I am certainly willing to put together. Typically, most of the models, because of the conservative nature of your revenues, you're typically anticipating expenditures a little higher than, you know, they tend, the lines cross relatively quickly. We could try to do a little more, less conservative than one, just to see that, but even that, I think anytime you're projecting 10 years, you're talking about enrollment of, you know, students that haven't been born. So it does get probably pretty murky, but we can certainly give it a shot and see what it looks like. And at least, we can certainly do what the impact of what the referendum would do and how that plays into it.
Yeah, I think we have all the data that we could share with you, how, because what I'm hearing essentially is you want something that would be able to explain to taxpayers. Okay, if we pass the, if we passed a renewal of the operating levy, the elementary project and the high school project, here's what the tax impact overall, a number of different what-if scenarios to say, if we did this, and this, and this, or we did this, the operating levy in one of the building projects, how would that impact tax? If we have all that data from LRS that we had shared with you last night, we would just have to put it in a little bit of a different format to be able to show you what that, remember it's estimated tax impact because it's preliminary, it's for discussion purposes. But we can easily put that together, or ask LRS to help us put that together. And I think what we're talking about, I think, you know, the importance of why the operating levy in conjunction with a bond, and I know I talked about this at the work session, but if you'll indulge me just for a moment to review it, is that one of the concerns that we have is making sure that the public understands that we're being as transparent as we possibly can about the things that the school district believes it may need over the next decade. And what we know, as many school districts who have gone for a bond issue, knowing that they're going to have to come back to the voters for a levy issue a few years after that, an operating levy, we will routinely see where the voters will pass the bond issue, and then when the district comes back for the operating levy a few years down the line, there's confusion over what a bond is for and what an operating levy is for, and we'll say it over and over again, that levies are for learning and bonds are for building. But it's very difficult to get the voter to understand that because it's been tried in a number of different districts, we have a lot of cute little catchphrases, but at the same time, I think it's really important that as we talk about the master facilities plan, that we talk about our operating levy needs over the next decade. Our operating levy is good until 2022, but by the time, if you were to choose to put anything on the ballot in 2017, if we were not to go with an operating levy and ask for some kind of expansion of the levy, we could potentially having a real issue if we had to come back a few years later, when we typically would have come back and usually probably 2020. I have a concern that the public will forget, you know, that we had said, we're going to need to come back to at least have a renewal. And it's just important for folks to understand that if we don't renew the operating levy as, at least as is, that's a $5 million gap in our budget, and this is, it's very serious. And so, making sure that we're transparent with the community about, not just about talking about the potential of renewing the operating levy early, but also talking about trying to project what we're going to need over the next decade, because we have outperformed what we told the public the last time around. We told them when we passed the operating levy in 2011, we told the taxpayers that we felt that we could maintain current programming for three to four years, we've already made it five, and we're projecting we're going to be able to make it two more years on the current funding. That's great, before we have to talk about budget reductions. But what we don't want to do is potentially sacrifice that ongoing financial stability. And I think the public knows that we have followed through and kept our promises. And so I think making sure that they know what we need over the long term is essential as a precedent to any kind of bond project. So while we've been talking master facilities plan, making sure that people know that we prioritize our programming first is so essential because we can, I mean, we really need to make sure that our programming is protected, our staff are protected who deliver that programming, and we just need to make sure the public knows that when we bring something forward to them, that's going to be in tandem for that purpose, not because we necessarily need it right now, but what we know we're going to need it down the line, and we don't want them to have to make multiple decisions over the next several years. So if people aren't comfortable with that, I just think it's important that we reiterate that as often as we can as our discussions are played out in public. We need to really help people understand why we're talking about both of these pieces.
Can they approve levy in 2017 that doesn't go into effect until 2022?
So typically, how you'll do that is, the common way that you do it is a term, is you rip and replace, which means you actually cancel, the vote would actually basically end your current levy and replace it with a levy that would go for 10 years. You're not allowed to go beyond 10 years with an operating levy, so we would have to basically sunset the old one and put a new one in for up to 10 years. But the law says we can't go beyond 10 years with an operating levy. There are a few, our capital projects levy, for example, that is one that you can stack and say, we want this to extend beyond, which is why our capital projects levy extends to 2024, 23. So it's one year beyond because we are able to stack that on top of the previous one. That particular issue works that way, operating levies do not.
Ellen?
So the one thing I shared with Dr. Hillman in our update is, I was really pleased with the work session too, but where I left was not sure of next steps, and so that, that's also kind of, I'm not as clear on how to articulate questions because I'm not sure at what point in the process we ask these kind of questions, and if we were rolling back from June to today, how would that look? So I think Julie's got great questions about the tax impact, and then the renewal versus, 424 versus maximum. I don't understand enough about the cases we would make beyond just renewing what we would have, to understand why we would do something different, and is now the time to ask that question. I guess if you're looking for a read from the board, is it worth your time to take, to outline for us what would a calendar look like a next step somewhere, we need to make decisions? Do we go back to an architect to have something more than the, so we're more sure of the numbers? I mean, all of those pieces, I don't know that timeline, but I am supportive of taking the next steps, and I think it would be worth our time. I think the work session gave me enough of a thought, questions answered and thinking to think that we should think about the next steps to asking the voters what they would want, and I don't know enough to know the questions to ask yet at this time.
Well, I think the impact Julie has asked for, because we did provide the tax impact, but it's not, and if we put it together, and so you see both the bond and the levy pieces together, and I think the financial forecast that you're asking, the extended financial forecast that Val can put together, I think that that's a next step in terms of the operating levy piece, because that shows you the longer-term projections, it shows you how the decline of the current operating levy could affect our ability to maintain programming beyond the next two years. So I think that's important information because that will help you take a look at, okay, would it be just a replacement? So we know that we have that same amount of money, is it going to be that we know that we may need some more to fill in the gaps for the continued state chronic underfunding that we've experienced since 1991, 92? So on the levy side, does that seem to make sense, Ellen, in terms of? So I think that we'll put that together for the next meeting so that we can give you that information, that will help generate that next level of questions. I think then the other piece on the bond is going to be the fact that we've vetted the projects through the master facilities planning process. What I think might be helpful, again, if you work backwards from June, would be along with the table that we put together of what the different components, the operating levy and the different bond issues potentially could cost taxpayers, I think that that also provides a vehicle for saying, the next piece is, if we were to ask the voters, what is the structure of the questions? And I think that's really important work for the board to do to determine, you know, is it an operating levy plus one of the projects? Is it an operating levy plus both of the projects and one question? Is it an operating levy plus both of the projects and multiple questions? Are the questions contingent upon each other, which means that in order to look at question two, question one has to pass, and so on and so forth? We had wanted to present all of the different concepts to you, but what I'm hearing board members say this evening is, give us those next steps, and we simply wanted tonight for you to further reflect upon the work session, and I think we're getting close to having the direction in terms of coming back to say, here's what the long-term financial forecast looks like, here's what the tax impact for a number of these potential projects are, and here are a variety of ways that the administration believes that you could look at this in terms of questions for the community. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Does that make sense to folks?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, you know, to Al's point, I think we, you know, we did the initial dive into what we saw, and then we want to do a little bit deeper dive and be able to determine, and I think what's critical too, is where the decisions need to be, when and the decisions need to be made, and then also looking at how it best works to have stakeholder input. We talked about the finance advisory group and potentially getting them involved in some initial discussions, et cetera, so I think. I'm wondering if we envision that to be a part of a regular school board meeting, or if we feel that the work session type approach worked better for this type of discussion? So, board members have thoughts on that? So in other words, when that information is available, do we envision wanting to review that as part of a regular school board meeting, or do we want to convene another work session to delve further into the information that would be provided at a work session? Joe?
I would say that there's things that come and go on the board, some of the biggest decisions to be made, that is a huge category, so, I mean, whatever we're doing, we need to act quickly and to be informed, just to be informed with the facts, get the facts upfront. And I think you have a unique opportunity based on the timeline of doing something versus doing nothing with an election cycle, with the possibility this fall, the next year, and really, you're probably pushing out a couple of years. So, I mean, I think whatever you're doing, you got a couple of shots at it in the next couple of years. So, yeah, I think you need to, you need to be as prepared as you can, and I think you really need to focus, like Ellen was saying, just for some clarity, you know, see first and understand, and then to be understood, in the old Chinese proverb. So I guess that's my thought.
Amy?
To use metaphor, when you're building a building, you need to put in a strong foundation, and you can be working on the foundation for months, and it doesn't look like anything's happening to the building. And I think that's where we are right now in our discussions, we're working on the foundation and seeing where the foundation leads us. So anytime that we need to put in, this is a critical time to do it right, and then make sure that we have all the information that we need and have all the discussions that we need to make sure that foundation is strong for whatever decisions are made. So I'd say if we need another work session, I'm off for it.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Other board members' comments? Ellen?
So I guess I would echo what Amy was saying, I don't know enough about, Julie would know more, looking out at the agendas. My concern if we continue to put these in the board meetings themselves, that we have a number, we want to make sure we're paying attention to everything that we need to pay attention to in our board meetings as well, so I think balancing that with, you know, having us really focused on the facilities to...
Okay, excellent. Any other board members have?
Well, I appreciate the comments everyone had, and I personally really like a work session for this type, because I agree, there's just a lot of level of detail, and I think it really provides the opportunity to just focus on this, this one aspect of an extremely critical decision ahead for the board and for this community. What I'm hearing then is that we have support for a work session. I think we've, you know, talked about a number of pieces of information we need to assemble prior to that, so I think, you know, if you guys want to, if Val and Ellen, you two want to maybe get together and determine, I know that there's some board members traveling, I would be hopeful if we could get something together for March, maybe prior to spring break, if that would work. And again, that's based on the, you know, the time you obviously need to assemble the information, so I think if we look to something past spring break, we're already into April, so maybe we can be optimistic and hope that we could convene a work session prior to spring break. Does that seem to work for people? Because I know we have board members traveling intermittently, and I think we have a window of opportunity.
When is spring break?
Spring break's the 20th through the 27th. So it would have to occur the first two weeks in March? So that really gives only a couple of weeks to really pull together the information, maybe...
I think we can come up with the information relatively quickly. I mean, I think that as Amy's analysis of the foundation, if you remember, we've been working on this for two years, so, you know, there are a lot of pieces that we do have done already, and some of these things, we actually have the information, just about formatting them. So I think that we can certainly take a look and be ready to go, no question, before spring break. I think there'd even be a chance, if you'd wanted to keep this part of the next meeting, we'd be able to have this presentation for you by then, but I think that the work session allows people a little bit more of a free flow idea, so.
Because as Matt and I were discussing earlier this evening, our agenda looks pretty light for the 27th.
The other thing to consider is our bond sale is actually on the 27th, so I believe Alums will be here. You know, they can certainly probably be available if we were to do a work session as well, if there was interest in them attending to answer questions, but sort of to throw that out there.
Well, I think we've talked about some options we have, I hear that board members would like to really be able to delve into this within a work session format, so we'll take a look at the dates going forward and communicate with everyone. I appreciate everyone's feedback, I think, on the work session, again, I appreciate hearing that everyone was encouraged coming out of the work session, and I appreciate the work that went into making that such a productive session, and that we're ready to move towards next steps, and that we know initially the information that we think we want to have, but we know that coming out of another work session will generate that much more information, so, so this is a process that we've just begun and continue to move forward. Good, excellent, thank you. Okay, so where are we at? We are now at a discussion regarding QCOM. Dr. Hillman?
So we talked about QCOM last fall, and I just wanted to bring it back ahead of you because we have been working with the association to continue the discussion about what kind of application our QCOM application might take place. Just want to review the program very quickly and then talk with you about a few things that we've learned to this point and where we're at in the process. And so, if you recall, just, we talked about last fall, what I included in your packet was really just the overview again of what QCOM is so that we can reactivate prior knowledge, that's an important piece here. So it's the Alternative Teacher Professional Pay System, that's the official name of QCOM. The intent of the program is to increase effective professional development and growth for teachers while also providing funding to assist in the financing of the accompanying programs and incentives. And if you remember, the key thing is that we have submitted a letter of intent, but we have not submitted the application. And the application includes a number of things, but the key thing that I wanted to share with you again is the funding in terms of that an approved QCOM application could generate $169 per pupil aid, and then the local board would have the eye... generate $169 per pupil aid, and then the local board would have the option to discuss a $91 board-approved levy. And when that's a board-approved levy, that's not something that the voters approve, but it's something that you would approve as the board. And there are several key areas within QCOM. There's career ladder achievement options for teachers, there's job-embedded professional development, there is, in terms of support for teacher evaluation, there's also performance pay, and an alternative salary schedule. Now, just the key piece is that as we've worked through this, the next deadline is March 15th to submit an application. And so the key thing is, a lot of work has been done in terms of preparing for a potential application. We know that there are 13 districts in the queue right now, and yet the legislature has not funded anything for those districts in the queue. And when you talk about districts, you're talking about, it's a mix of school districts and charter schools. So what I wanted to bring this back to your attention for is the fact that we haven't seen any funding from the legislature as of yet, and as we've talked all along, unless there's funding from the legislature, it was going to be a piece that we were going to need to wait until the next round to make any kind of application because of the fact that we're not going to do it without, both the association and the district agree, we're not going to do it without having the state funding. But I just wanted to bring this back for you to know that we're working through some of these pieces, looking at the potential of being able to get an application for March 15th. We also know that a lot of really good work has been done, and we really want to thank IC, Brent is here tonight, I know Brent, you were a strong part of the QCOM committee. And even if an application isn't ready for this time around, we've got a lot of good work that's ready to move forward in terms of next steps. So I just wanted to reactivate that we're coming back to look at, is there a possibility to be able to get an application by March 15th? And if not, just what the next steps are in terms of the process? So I just wanted to reactivate this, if there are any questions or thoughts from board members about, we would of course bring an application back to you. If we were to bring an application back to you, it could be before the March 15th piece, it is just still a tight timeframe at this point. So I just wanted to reactivate the discussion and then see if board members had any questions or thoughts about QCOM at this point as we move forward.
Ellen?
Sure. So I guess back when this was presented in August, I talked about how I was really excited about the mentoring and coaching piece, and I still think that's really interesting. And particularly after we saw the continuous improvement presentation that came out of the...
Monomie Falls, yeah.
You can really see some synergies that are possible, but having, we just talked about our work session, and this would, the $91 per pupil would be a board-approved levy, it wouldn't go out to the voters. So I guess I'm a little concerned about the timing. I think we were in a different spot in August and September, we're in another different spot, which is, I think, a proactive spot, but just, I guess I'd be interested in what other board members think, but I guess I'm, I think, like you said, Dr. Hillman, I'm really excited about all these pieces and the steps and the work that's gone into it, I'm just a little concerned about the timing right now.
Other questions, comments, board members have? Amy?
So if we get that application in now and it's in the queue, do they take, when they fund things, do they take them in order? So is there an advantage to being in the queue at this point?
My understanding is that what happens is you get in line in terms of that, but if the legislature, how the legislature has worked in the past, when the funding has run out, they have approved enough money for everyone in the queue, which is why there's the March 15th deadline, because then the legislature knows who's in the queue, and they have a chance during the session yet to solve that. We do understand there might be a couple of bills that are being authored that may include the funding for the QCOM, queue, that's a weird statement, but that's the way it works. However, as all sheriff in the legislative update, the governor didn't include it in his budget, and so that's a concern that I have in terms of, will there be, will the legislature be able to fund that? So if you're in the queue, you have a better chance than not. Of course, if you're not in the queue, you can't be funded. But what we've seen, when they have replenished the fund, they have replenished it to the point that all of the schools in the queue were funded.
Okay. Other questions?
No.
I go back to my, to the previous concern, no, the concern I had the previous discussion is that I don't believe the state of Minnesota has got a good record of sustainable funding for education. And while that may be an indictment on the state, I think all we have to do is go back a few years to see where they decided how to balance the budget, and they took it away from education. Now, unless there is some other way that this would be funded through the legislature, I would expect we'll be, same, the same opportunity could be available to the legislature. If they needed to balance the budget, then they would restrict funding to QCOM, unless there is some other leverage in there that would allow them to do something else. I think there's a question in there somewhere, at least there is a comment.
Well, I think your question is, you know, there's quite a few school districts, in fact, more than half the students in Minnesota go to a school district that has QCOM funding. So that's a pretty large group of kids. But I also am, I'm also understanding of your point that the legislature before has gone back on its order in terms of sustaining funding. I think the difficulty that they would have Noel in terms of undoing the current QCOM funding is, especially a lot of the early schools have it so integrated into their master agreements, you know, that the, I really believe there'd be quite a bit of an uproar in terms of folks if they were to try to take some of that funding away. You've even seen some discussion in the last couple of years about how to try to maybe marry that with the teacher development and evaluation systems, because QCOM schools are also required to do the teacher development evaluation. Now, the way they do it looks slightly different than non-QCOM schools like us, but there's a continuing growing concern about, for some school districts, there's just not an interest at all in looking at QCOM. We've had a shared interest of taking a look at it over time, taking a look at it in a couple of different ways. There are some school districts, this is just not for them. And there's a concern about equity, you know, between the school districts that are not in the program and do not receive the $169, you know, per pupil aid, or the $91 levy, which we know most of the districts that are in QCOM do levy the $91. I think that the greater question is how the QCOM schools will respond if the state were to try to even some of those pieces out with TDNE. And that being said, we've all seen the legislative history and the fact that from time to time, they have taken away things that we thought were for sure stable. And unfortunately, it's happened more than one time, so I absolutely understand your concern, Noel, because should the state get into a rainy day situation, we have been the, their ability to balance the budget before, because of course, the state budget says, the state is required to have a balanced budget. And so we know how that has impacted us before, when they have withheld funding in the last several years using those kind of accounting tricks that they used the last time around. We also know it's not, it's been within many of your tenure, Noel, you probably remember a time when, they've not done this in a long time, but the legislature actually took some money away from school districts' fund balances, if you remember, when they were, they got too large according to what the state was. I always struggled with that because that was good financial management of school districts, managing their costs and their revenue for long-term health, and yet they took, no, we haven't seen that in a long time, but crazier things have happened. So I think your concern about, is the legislature in it for the long haul, that's a fair question to ask. If you ask them, they'll say yes, but they may not be in their positions when the question comes up.
They may say yes, but I would ask them to look at their, their record. And it was painful when the state balanced their budget on the backs of the schools. And I, I have no reason to believe they wouldn't do it again.
Well, they have a track record.
At least in my mind, they do. I, you know, I'm reticent about that, but I'm also reticent about one other one, another concept, and that is that we can, we can authorize a levy that doesn't have the voters, wouldn't have a voter, wouldn't have gone to the voters. And I'm not comfortable living there. I think we've done it in the past, and I've been part of it, but I'll look at that later and see if that's the right thing to do. You know, and it, it may be right, but it may not be ethical. So, I'm not, I like the idea, the concept, there's just a whole bunch of stuff in here that could be really great to be able to buy into. But if the state decides not to support it in 10 years, what to the districts do? Because it would be part of a contract, right?
It very well could be, yes.
And we can't compromise on a contract, we're committed to the contract. And we would have to approve part of it without approval of the voters, without comment from the voters. I mean, we have a right to, I suppose we could vote the voters and ask, but that's another issue. I'm still deciding.
Any other board members have?
Joe? Can you write in the contingency on that, if not funded by state, would that?
Yeah, you know, the way that the application process works is that submitting the application simply takes you to the next step. So there's actually another, my understanding is that there's another round that, before you actually begin to execute, once the application is approved and we have all the knowledge of where the funding is going to be, then both the board and the association would have to vote again to move forward. So the application is really kind of the second step in a three-step process. So if you submit the application, then what you do is you have, they say roughly about a month of haggling back and forth with the department about what are the changes that you might need and so on and so forth, until you come to a point where they give you final application for it. I see Brent nodding his head, so I'm on the right track here. And then at that point, then the, both the board and the association have to do another vote to make sure that they execute it moving forward.
Yes.
And I think the key thing is that we've settled along, you know, if there aren't any funds for it, you know, we wouldn't be able to fund, you know, the instructional coaches and those things that are part of the process. And I think that that is frankly the hardest part in the plan, is that, you know, there's a lot of effort that goes into it, and until you know that there's going to be the funding, there's a little bit of a leap of faith, you know, in terms of all the work. And I know that the association's team has known that all along too, that we haven't seen what the guarantee is. The work that has been done is excellent in terms of looking at the approach, in terms of supporting people along the career ladder and the coaching and those kinds of pieces. I think the question is just, what I don't want to see happen is, I don't want to see us submit an application, you know, and then not be to the point where we think either group would approve it, because there's a lot of effort that goes there. If we come back to it and say, we've got a good bones of this, we can see how this shakes out, we have another opportunity to apply next fall, I think we'd all be okay with knowing that, you know, in terms of, I would hate to get an application approved and then come back and have either group not approve it at the end. So I think that this discussion is important because if there are misgivings or there's concerns about where we're at at this point, I think I need to be able to try to help finalize those before we were to think about submitting the application on March 15th. Otherwise, it's looking at, you know, what's the strategy for submitting something in the fall?
Ellen?
So I guess, you know, following up with Noel and the authority to levy for the people, I guess, and I think that's what you're saying, Dr. Hillman, is that you're needing a read from the board, that if we're reluctant about that at this moment, that...
Well, as I'm hearing the discussion tonight, that's my, that's where I'm kind of asking now too, is think, just thinking through, what are the concerns that we have? Because what I don't want to do is, I think it's the worst-case scenario to get to an application and have the application approved by the department if we're, if we have any concerns about it.
So I guess the one concern I have is, we've been, at a work session, we were talking about the importance of the operating levy, and that if we went for any bonding, that we would want to first make sure that we could get an operating levy approved. And I guess I wouldn't want anything to jeopardize our ability to do that. And I, so I guess my, my only concern, my, many of these things are really exciting, and I just would not want to put us in a position where we were going to jeopardize, you know, the ability to get the community to support an operating levy.
And we've been pretty clear that we do, we want to make sure that that operating levy is solid.
Noel?
Would the funding for QCOM be rolled into the next, due to the subsequent contract, financial parts of the contract? Or can be one be contingent on state supplying the funding for QCOM?
I believe that you can, you could write language in any which way that you want. I believe there would be nothing that prevents, I'm looking at Brent Ral, because he was on the committee, I don't think there would be anything that would prevent us from writing language that would say, you know, should the state stop funding its portion of it, that this part of the contract could be suspended or whatever.
Right. Noel, that would be the way that I would understand that, correct?
We would want to get some advice from folks on that, because I think that that's, you know, before we were to say that, we would want to have a couple of folks that, whether that's, I haven't seen any QCOM applications that include that.
Right. And because most of the, and because of the QCOM money is going towards those positions and achievements by teachers based off of that amount of money, not as much approved by what's already in our contract as a lanes, steps and lanes. There is a tie-in to it, but it's, if we, if a teacher meets proficiency standards along the way, then they are allowed to move on steps and lanes within the contract. They're sort of separate, it's just not a full tie-in. Does that make sense, Noel? Like, all QCOM money is based off of those performance activities that teachers would be doing, meeting the specific requirements for their reflections, making their observations with their mentees along the way. All of that QCOM money is, goes towards those QCOM activities.
Well, I'm happy Brent was here so we could have him help us with this. I didn't anticipate you being here, so thank you, that's good. I think the key thing is that if you look at some of the early applications, I think some of the early applications had it more directly tied into the salary schedule.
Yes.
And I think some of those, in fact, what we know is there are a couple of districts that had it originally early on, who I think have cycled out because of some of the things that they learned early on. So, you know, the key thing is that there are some different ways. I do think there'd be a way to look at, pretty much in a system where if the state were ever stopped funding, that it would provide us an opportunity to, an escape clause, if you will.
Amy, is there an expectation, is there an expectation that if we did get QCOM funding, that we would want to levy to match that, or can we just afford the justifying that the state provides?
You know, the fact is that if you look at the data, which we have, the overwhelming majority of schools do levy the $91, but it's not a requirement in terms of, you don't have to do the levy in order to participate in the program. As we've worked through the plan, there's been some, some concern about not having the $91 levy would have, would create an issue in terms of the overall budget. I think that's a fair way to say it, in looking at the entire plan. So as we've talked through that with the association, there's been some concern about not, about doing it without the $91 levy in order to be able to fund all of the parts of the application, or all of the parts of the plan. There are some districts, it's not many, but there are a few who have either started out by not doing the $91 levy and planning to do it a year or so later. There are some who have actually taken a, for lack of a better term, a holiday from it, you know, where they've had the levy for several years, and then they may have under-levered one year because of some specific local circumstances. But when you look at the data from MDE, the overwhelming majority of the school districts levy the $91 from the beginning and continue to do so.
Noel?
So if we look forward in our, our window of opportunity, our window of commitment, we could have three levies, and we could have activated three levies in a foreseeable future.
In terms of Noel, the, looking at the, an operating levy?
Yep.
Some kind of bond levy, either in one or two questions possibly, and then the...
The QCOM levy.
The QCOM board-approved levy, that's true.
One of them is minor compared to the other two, but I would want the minor one to raise havoc with the thought process of the other two.
Other comments, board members have?
Okay, I have a couple comments. So I really appreciate the discussion tonight, and I appreciate having it at this juncture as we sort of, you know, March 15th deadline is looming. And like Ellen, I went back and really spent some time reflecting on, again, the positive aspects of QCOM that I saw. You know, there's really some excellent aspects, you know, we have an opportunity to fully maximize what we always, what we're already doing as a district, the teacher development and fee... The teacher development and feedback, we know would help improve and inform instruction and really come back to, you know, accelerated achievement for our students. I was really encouraged to hear the three individuals who stepped forward and talked about their own experience with Q Comp and, and the leadership aspects that it provided for them. So, so it's a really, it's a really difficult place, I think, to be where we are right now in terms of understanding and really acknowledging the benefits that our district could see as a result of Q Comp. But then I also look back to August and think that I would never, ever have imagined that the district would be where we are right now. Because in August, we really felt like what we saw were moving budget cuts. And, and now we, we are looking at a situation that is different than that. So we've changed in terms of our financial position as a district. We had also not at that time approved the master facilities plan, nor had we really had the input from the thought exchange from our community to say, we really support what's happening with the master facilities plan. We were anxious to hear what those next steps are. And that's really what precipitated the work session for us as a board, was hearing the community say, you know, we are, you know, we're engaged and we're invested and we want to know what the next steps are. And so I think it's, it's, we're at a much different place than we were in August when Ray Kordray first presented Q Comp. And I, and I follow the line of thinking that Ellen and Noel have, and I appreciate the question that Amy raised as well, is that we have, what we understand is that why we unfortunately have to leave the money that's available to us from the state on the table, the $269 per person, or per student, you know, we would have to move on that $91 non-voter approved levy. And faced with where we are right now in terms of looking to potential operating levy, which provides significantly more money than that, and asking the voters to, to approve some, some pretty significant tax, tax increases, I, I think it's a challenging time for us to do this. But I also acknowledge the amount of work that has gone into doing this, and I, I'm hopeful that we feel like we're at a place where we can see at some point in the future it may make sense for us to, to approach this more in earnest as, as we've worked through some of the issues that are really more top of mind for us right now in the district.
Okay, well, I just, what I wanted to do is, this is exactly the discussion I needed because I wanted to make sure that we brought it back up because we hadn't brought it back to you in, in a couple of months. I wanted to gauge where people were at, and I think that I've got some direction here and I'll go back and talk with Bray and the association about our next steps in terms of that, and so we'll move forward from there.
Okay. I have some good questions.
Yes, Amy.
So are you saying that they should wait to file an application? Or should that process just continue forward because we don't know whether it's going to be funded or accepted?
I think the key thing is that whether or not we're going to get an application from March 15th deadline, there's, I don't think there's anything wrong if we've submitted an application yet this spring, it would simply be before the next deadline next fall. And so then at that point, we'd get in the queue at that point. So in terms of, you know, if we're saying that we're not looking at submitting that application yet this spring, it would be a matter of that we would miss the deadline for this round, but we could certainly continue to look at it and determine if an application was worthy to, not worthy, but if the application was ready and you were comfortable with the other parts of it to be submitted for the next round. So it, it isn't as if it's not something that we could look at doing for what hearing board members say, is that putting an application in at this point, even if we're to get to approve, by that time that discussion happens late in the spring, once we know the approval, we could be ready to talk about the operating levy, and there's just a concern about those two items colliding at the same time.
If we submit an application and it's approved, then, I mean, do we have to move forward with it?
You, you wouldn't have to. But my concern would be about getting to that point of submitting an application. If, if, if the board has concerns about approving it at the end, I don't want to work, the work that the association and us would do together if it's not going to be something that's going to be ready for your approval, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I guess where I'm coming from is, there's a lot of pieces that have to come together, and so I'm hesitant to make a decision at so, at such a preliminary time because we don't know how all the other pieces are coming together. So I hate to say stop on this because it may still all work out. So that's why I'm, I understand everyone's, whatever I'm saying, but it's like, I hate to stop things now on a what-if and without really knowing what's going to happen. And maybe the state won't fund things this year for the queue, but they'll fund it next year for the queue, and if we get in the queue now, it'll work. So, so that's, I, I understand there's a lot of balls and juggling, you're the expert, but I just wanted to say.
No, none of us are an expert in this part yet, so. We, I, what I'll take back is the discussion that we've had here, and I just want to be straightforward about if we, if we do, you know, finish the application and have it ready to go in, just the fact that it's possible, you know, that we may have submitted an application and then because of the timing component, we may not be ready to act upon it, you know, at the end. I just, I want to be transparent about that. If that's how people are feeling, I don't want to get people's hopes up that we're there and we're ready to go and then not have an affirmative final vote because I think that that's the worst-case scenarios working through that. It's not that the work can't continue toward it, it's just a matter of I want to be transparent with people about where we're at in the process and what, what the different pieces are in place to, that are, are working with or against each other at various points in that process.
Thank you. Good discussion.
I will be working with folks in the next couple of days to determine our next steps.
Okay.
Thank you for the time to talk through that. I just, I didn't want us to get further without having a discussion about it so that we knew exactly where we're at and we could update you with you where we were at and get some feedback, so. Thank you for the work.
I appreciate everyone's discussion, this is an important issue. Okay, so our last item for discussion and report is the legislative update. Dr. Hulman.
So what I included in your packet was some information from a legislator's school leader breakfast forum, which was held on Saturday, February 4th. I'm not going to take the time to go through every single topic for you, but what you'll notice is you'll see that there was a forum program, and on the top of the forum program there is a URL or a link that you could type in to your web browser and you'd be able to get all of the information that was shared at the legislative forum. And so that's all of the slides and all of what we printed, it was like 56 pages and we didn't think that you would want all of that information in your board packet. I just want to review briefly the topics that were discussed that day and then just talk about a couple of other legislative priory, or our legislative priorities. So the first piece, Superintendent Mike Grevan from Goodhue Schools talked about the success of the long-term facilities maintenance program at this forum, which there are probably, I would say, a dozen legislators there from southeastern Minnesota that's sponsored by the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, Region One, which is basically from here down to Caledonia if you go south and east. So Mike Grevan talked about the longer facilities maintenance program and gave some really good examples of how that great legislation, which I would like to call out, was sponsored by a Northfield senator at the time, Kevin Dahl, has really helped school districts be able to maintain their facilities moving forward, and we've talked a number of times about how that's helped us. Ken Fall, Superintendent Beth Gees, talked about the importance of continuing to streamline the Board of Teaching and the Minnesota Department of Education. There was also a pretty detailed presentation about the teacher shortage and specifically things around special education, teacher licensure specifically about allowing folks to come from out of state and having a little bit more of a streamlined process for people with licenses from out of state to get Minnesota licensure. And so those two pieces came together, and as you know, there's been a working group looking at licensure, and we're going to see how the legislature solves. As everyone agrees, there's got to be some streamlining, but we're not exactly seeing all of the details quite yet, though I do believe that they're going to be coming in this session because the fact is that many school districts throughout the state are seeing severe shortages, not only in special education, but also seeing dips in terms of other areas such as mathematics and sciences, how licensure impacts those and whether multi-categorical special education licenses would be the way to go. Those are things that the legislature's going to continue to have to wrestle with. And again, those two presentations were very powerful in terms of talking about the teacher shortage and how the streamlining of the Board of Teaching and the MDE teacher licensing system could impact that. Fairboe Superintendent Todd Sesfer and I had a chance to present to the legislators on the basic formula, and you know, are passionate about that. You know, we get 70% of our funding from the state, and so that per-people basic formula is our main source of revenue. And you've heard of saying countless times, and the fact that the legislature has not kept up with inflation most years since 1991, '92, and of course, I've included in your packet the very famous chart that shows that in order to have the same buying power that the formula had in 1991, '92, the legislature would have to increase the current formula by $2,188 per people, and currently the per-people formula is $6,067. So we're not holding our breath anytime soon that the legislature is going to come up with that amount of money, that'd be about a third increase. So we really focused on the fact that the basic formula is essential, and we also focused on the fact that the special education formula has continued to not keep up with the mandates that were required. We are doing, schools in Minnesota are doing a great job, better than ever, about trying to address a lot of the needs that students have in terms of with disabilities. However, we continue to see a growth in a number of disability areas that are very difficult for us to appropriately address, and we continue to work on it. But just as an example, if you average Northfield and Fairboe, we are basically have what's called a special education cross subsidy of around $3 million. That's the average of our two districts. And so that means $3 million of general fund dollars that are being used to support mandated, mandated curriculum, mandated services, those kinds of pieces. Now I want to be really clear, it's not that we don't very much support the work that special education does for addressing and meeting the needs of kids with disabilities, but it's an example of a completely underfunded mandate. And so we would also argue that if the state were to increase the special education formula from the state portion, the good news about a state increase in special education funding is it's one of the few formulas that we get that's indexed, which means that it has an automatic escalator with inflation. And so if the state legislature were to give additional dollars in special education funding, it would essentially help us have greater flexibility with the general fund. So we focused for quite a bit of time on the basic formula, and we know that the governor's budget has come out with a recommendation of 2% in each of the years in the biennium, and of course, the MASA and several other of our educational organizations. And we advocated that day that we don't believe that we just want, we need a 3% increase in each of the bienniums. So what we heard from that presentation is Senator Carla Nelson, who is the chair of the Education Finance Committee in the Senate, she has told us now a couple of times, and she's clearly heard school districts wanting additional dollars and needing additional dollars on the basic formula. So if you're asked by a legislator, what are your priorities? What is the most important thing that you think we should do from an education funding perspective? Please articulate that we want 3% on the basic formula in each of the next two years, and a close second will be working to address the issues around the special education formula because that, for us, gives us similar amount of relief. Now, that's not true of all school districts, especially some smaller school districts who may have all of their special education students go to a cooperative or an education district, which in some cases you have it. It is not as, the special ed funding formula is not as equitable across the board as the basic formulas, but we would, in Northfield, we would take either. And so those are the two things that I really want you to, to focus on if you're asked your opinions of legislators, what would be the Northfield Public Schools' priorities being? For sure, it would be the basic formula because that gives us the greatest flexibility, it allows us the most local control, and it allows us to put it in a place where we can use to spend it on, directly on the people who serve our students, and we think that's really important. There was also a really great presentation by Mark Matuska and Tammy Berg, Bernie Akon, on the debt service equalization piece, specifically what's often referred to as the ag to school. And we talked about this a little bit at our work session the other night. The current bill, there's been a couple of iterations of it, but the current bill that Representative Droskowski from the ZEPA has in would be a 40% discount on agricultural property when it comes to bond referenda. So if you think about our discussions around bond referenda, if the ag to school tax credit were to go through it, this is a bill that has bipartisan support, it passed both houses last year, and it was an unfortunate casualty of the pocket veto that the governor had of the omnibus bill and then just did not make it through in the special session. But everyone agrees that this is an important thing, and that ag to school tax credit will have tremendous impact on schools that are looking at bonding issues, giving a 40% discount to farmers on their agricultural portion. Remember, on an operating levy, ag land is not taxed in the same way that it is on a bond issue. So really important for the discussions that we're having, you may have paid attention to, there was a really great article in the Star Tribune recently about Cleveland, Minnesota, small town, maybe east of St. Peter, and the fact that they are, they have a K-12 school and they were looking to do some pretty significant enhancements to their building, really more modernization and those things. And this is the kind of thing that had it been in place, their bond last week may have had a different outcome. But unfortunately, their second, their second attempt went down. So that 40% is a really important piece, and again, that would be something I'd ask you to talk with legislators about. I'll also continue to talk about the success that we've seen in some of the preschool funding in terms of specifically some of the scholarship pieces. Also talking about universal preschool, this was Rochester and Austin co-presenting some really great things about some of the things that they're seeing with their enhanced scholarship opportunities and continuing to look at a long-term solution of universal four-year-old preschool. Also talking about the challenges of the fact that many school districts don't have the facilities quite yet to be able to handle that. But we all know, and one of the reasons that we're excited about that elementary project that's in our master facilities plan, is it would dramatically increase our ability to serve kids in preschool programming here in Northfield. As we said, we are out of space, we're one of those districts, we could actually probably use more scholarship money, but we don't have anywhere else to put those students. And so the fact is that as the legislature and the governor continue to talk about universal pre-K, the fact is that we're going to have to really look at how school districts have those facilities available. But Austin and Rochester have some really good pieces going on with their program, it's really great to hear them talk about it. We also heard about an issue that currently does not impact Northfield tremendously because at our high school, as you know, we have mostly advanced placement programming, we have very little, if any, we have a little bit of concurrent enrollment, but the concurrent enrollment issues that districts, that that is their sole way in which they provide students the opportunity for college credit. So just to explain what concurrent enrollment is briefly, many school districts have partnerships with state colleges or universities where they offer a course at their high school, the teacher has a specific training, they use the same syllabus, they use the same textbook as what the college course does, and the student staying at their own high school earns both college credit through one of the universities that the district partners with, and also earns high school credit. So it's different than PSEO, where PSEO where students actually leave campus, encourage enrollment, students stay on campus, the teachers are specifically, get some specific training, they use the same syllabus and course materials, and the students can get both of those college credits, or get the college and the high school credit. The issue is that the Higher Learning Commission had come out in its infinite wisdom and said that in order for high school teachers to be able to teach those courses, they needed to have a master's degree, not just in something like curriculum and instruction, which many of our teachers have a master's degree in curriculum and instruction, they're saying that you need to have a master's degree in the content area. Well, many, many school districts have really gone into the concurrent enrollment piece, you have to have a master's degree to be able to teach the courses, but many districts have teachers teaching those classes who might have an undergraduate degree in, say, social studies education, teaching a concurrent enrollment government class, but they don't have a master's degree in government or political science. This is a crisis for school districts who are heavily reliant upon concurrent enrollment, and they did get a five-year extension from the Higher Learning Commission. There are some partner projects, Morehead, the State University of Morehead actually has the first project of, it's called an 18-credit project where teachers can take these 18 credits in order to be qualified in their content area. And it's a variety of ways that they're doing it. It's a big, big deal for a lot of other school districts, not as much for us because I don't, to my knowledge, I don't believe we have any concurrent enrollment at this point happening here in Northfield. So again, more for other folks, but it is a bigger deal for districts who are doing that. So I've also included in your packet, for your reference, the MASA, the MASA legislative platform. I've also included the Schools for Equity in Education platform, which you know, we are active participants in the Schools for Equity in Education. are active participants in the Schools for Equity and Education and Julie and I attend the meetings, both the regional and the statewide meetings regularly. And I've also included the MSBA platform. Now, the key thing is you certainly can go through and look at those and determine as you talk with legislators of what are the pieces that you'd like some more discussion for, at the Capitol about. Again, just from my perspective, I think the top pieces from a finance perspective are basic formula and a close second would be the special education formula. So I would offer any questions that people have at this time.
Amy.
Mrs. Allen, thank you for this information. I was just wondering, I know some of us are going up to see our legislators and talk with them, but there might be other occasions where you have information of a bill that's being considered or, you know, something that, a time when it might be timely for us to be calling our representatives. Is that a chance? Would you send out emails to us saying, here's a bill that's up?
Can you go ahead?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I didn't mean to jump in. No, so, so, and I can talk with you afterwards, but we're very fortunate in that we are affiliated with Schools for Equity and Education as well as the Minnesota Association of School Boards and MSBA, and they do action alerts. So I can get you the information in terms of how you get connected via email with that and it's really excellent because they will supervise every Friday a legislative update and then they will send action alerts out as bills are being worked through conference, either through committee, through conference committee and then ultimately through the board, so that we have opportunities to wait and let it's, you know, give them time for that bill to either have a hearing or to have, to have the necessary support to seek through committee. So yeah, it's excellent and I appreciate you looking long-term to say, how do we, how do we continue to advocate for this stuff? And it is really excellent. They provide very timely information and they can even provide sort of a template of a letter that you can choose to either, you know, sort of be inspired by or actually just send as is. It's, you know, it's just again, it's giving that, the touch point with a legislator to say, you know, I support this because.
I am on my mailing list. I don't think I've received an action alert yet.
And that's possibly, probably because the, as you move through the legislative process, there are still bill deadlines yet that have not come to fruition. So there are, if you look on the C website, there's a section on legislative resources where they actually have a listing that I believe is updated every day of all of the education-related bills that have been submitted. There are quite a few fewer this year actually than last time I looked, there were only 35. However, the key thing when you look at some of those, initially you might look at and say, oh my gosh, is that really proposed? And, you know, then you, as you learn about it from the folks that we have who are at the legislature every day, there are some that they will say, you know, that bill has been introduced, but it's, it's never going to make it through the process and we're going to focus our efforts here. So that's what I like about the legislative alerts, which you will start to get as we get past some of the bill deadlines because our folks who are there every day through our organizations can tell us which ones are the ones that we really need to pay more attention to and which are the ones that have been submitted so that the person who's submitted them can say, I submitted a bill. And that's, that's not a political piece, that's on either side of the aisle. Sometimes folks will submit bills so that they're able to say, well, I've tried to sponsor legislation, but we just haven't made it through yet. So what I appreciate about the legislative counsel that we get from our respective organizations is that they, we trust them to tell us, you know, in terms of when there's an opportunity for us to advocate to the legislation. But I would also encourage you to take a look at those list of bills that have been introduced because it can give you a flavor of what are the kinds of things that come before the legislature and we'll often take a look at them and say, oh my goodness, how would we actually implement something like that? We also will go and testify from time to time. We have, as you referenced, we've got a day set up with our legislators. I have tried to talk to our legislators a few times, I just saw both of them last week at the Rice County Chemical Health Coalition meeting and had a chance to talk about Senator Grayheim and Representative Bly and talk with them about things that are before the Senate and the House right now, talk about our preferences, especially in terms of the funding side. We keep in regular contact with them and actually they will call us from time to time and ask how we feel about a particular issue that's coming before, you know, the legislature. So I think pay attention close to those action alert pieces because they're the folks that are there every day and we're not always exactly sure of when a bill is going to come up, when one really has enough legs to where you have to be concerned about it. And the folks that we talk with who have been there for a number of years, they, they have a pretty good insight as to how much legs things have in terms of getting through the process.
And I will definitely do that. And let me also encourage you back that if there's something that seems particularly important to Northfield that you want to bring my attention to, I would be happy to receive any correspondence from you.
As you know, we're never shy to do that. So we'll certainly share that. So again, I just, I wanted to share with you a little bit about the legislative forum to provide you with the current platforms from three of the organizations that we belong to. And if there are any other questions or thoughts or comments, we certainly can discuss those at this time.
Questions, comments?
Rob.
There are the questions that go with this, but I just wanted to ask a basic question about the special education cross subsidy. So a student in special education, there's special education money that goes with that student and there's also the per people that all students get that goes with that same student. So the cross subsidy is, if you look at it just per, as a single student, there's money that's being taken from the general education portion of that per people and going to special education. So just wanted, there's, there are students who are in special education services the entire day, right? So they, the special education money is going with them and the per people should go with them, right? So that doesn't seem to be like a cross subsidy, it just seems like that's all money that's going with that student who's being serviced through special education.
And I think the key thing, Rob, when we refer to the cross subsidy, what we're looking at is the amount of dollars that it costs to provide the mandated services for the special education students in our district, which is greater than what the funding that we get from, for special education. So because most, the majority of special education students also spend quite a bit of their day in the general education environment. So when we, what we're looking at the cross subsidy is what is the actual cost of educating special education students versus the special education funding? And so I see, I think I see where you're going with this, that there's part of the general ed fund, the part of their general ed funding also supports their learning during the day, but the issue is both the state or the federal government, even though they have put those rightful mandates into place, have never been able to even come close to the entire cost of educating that student. And I see Val's got something she's going to share with you, so.
The, the calculation that generates that $3 million amount takes into consideration our total social education expenditures, our total social ed revenue and our total gen ed revenue that is generated from those students. So it's taking all of that into consideration and the $3 million is what's left that's really coming out of our general fund. So, is that helpful?
Yep, that's great.
Good questions.
Excellent. So any other questions or comments?
I just appreciate the legislative update and the really good information you gave. It makes us really be able to, in English, understand some of the aspects of the education funding, which is very complex as we know.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we will move on now to our first item for individual action, resolution requiring administration to make recommendations regarding programming and staffing for next year. Dr. Hillman.
So the key thing is that this is the standard resolution we ask you to take each year. This really kicks off our staffing process and so we are not projecting at this point to have budget reductions for next year, but as you know, from time to time, we make adjustments to staffing based upon student registrations or other kinds of pieces. That, this directs our administrators to make sure that they are going through that full and fair process to make sure that our, our staffing needs are relevant to these students that we have in the registrations that they're doing. So it's a standard piece that gets this process kicked off.
Okay. This is an item for individual action, so prior to discussion or questions, is there a motion to authorize the administration to make recommendations for additions and reductions in program and for adding or discontinuing positions? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Noel. Hey, any comments or questions? We have a motion, so all those in favor?
It's a rule call.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is a resolution. As a resolution, it's a rule call vote. I'm sorry, Danita?
Stratton.
Aye.
Quinell.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Hardy.
Aye.
Irwitz.
Aye.
And Pritchett.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is there only item for individual action? So we'll now move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a few personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to hold from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So moved.
Moved by Rob, is there a second? Second by Ellen. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to items for information in your packets, the enrollment report for February of 2017. Dr. Hillman.
And what you will see with our February 1st enrollment is another small uptick, so 4,078 and a half students finishing February 1st. So that's a piece where we now see we're actually back up to the amount that we had in the month where we had those exchange students that were here for a short amount of time. If you remember, we were telling you that, you know, that, that is going to go backwards because they were only here for a specific period of time, they were here long enough where we had to count them on the roll, but then those German exchange students went back home. But now we're right back up to 4,078 and a half students. So the continuing increase that we see, which brings both the positive aspects and of course, challenges in terms of programming as we move forward. So the enrollment report is, is another positive sign about what people think about our school district as we continue to see that enrollment uptick.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments on the enrollment report?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do a lot of people start at the beginning of the semester, is that why there's an uptick right now?
So there's a variety of different pieces. We will see some students showing up in, after January 1, you know, so we may see them coming after the winter break. And in some cases, those may have been captured with the January 3, if they showed up right that day, but there's also students who may not show up until the 4th or 5th who would now be captured in this report. So sometimes it's students who come after winter break, depending on when winter break ends at their other school district, but sometimes it is starting at the semester. It depends upon the circumstances.
Okay, any other questions? All right, that's our last item for information. So our future meetings include regular school board meeting Monday, February 27th and Monday, March 13th at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. As we discussed, we will potentially communicate going forward about the possibility of a work session within the first two weeks of March. So with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Noel, second. Second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.